And take their seats so we can begin, please. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the county council meeting of Monday, January 22. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain for the invocation, standing for the invocation by Councilmember Paula Brown?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, we pray that this council meeting tonight and to give all the council members wisdom and guidance as we deliberate on the items before us, may we honor one another by keeping an open mind, may we voice our truth and listen with an open heart and with integrity, transparency, and accountability. Amen.
As you can see, we do have all 11 members of council either at the dais, 10 of us are there. Mr. McKellen is online, so we do have a full council to conduct the business of council. Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. In item number four, we're going to have a couple changes to the county meeting, so I'm going to begin with Ms. Tabernick. You'll go first.
Thank you, Chairman, passment. I move that we approve by title only a first reading of an ordinance, this will be item 15A, I'm sorry. I move that we approve by title only a first reading of an ordinance appropriating 15% of state ATAX funds for workforce housing, subject to review by the state ATAX committee and in compliance with the requirements of South Carolina Code of Laws.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Chairman.
Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion about this particular item? Seeing none, this will be approved without any objection. Mr. Cunningham, I will turn to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, just need to make one little update here on number 12. It says that it came from the Finance Administration Economic Development Committee, but we need to make the amendment that says time-sensitive item from the January 2022 Public Facilities and Safety Committee.
Okay. Is there a second to that change?
I'll second it.
Okay, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this change will be made without objection. I now ask for someone to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda with those changes.
Slow motion, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Dawson makes the second duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the agenda as amended will be approved. Next is the approval of minutes of January 8 of 2024. A motion, please.
Slow motion.
Mr. Reitz makes the motion.
I'll second the motion.
Ms. Howard makes the second duly motioned and seconded, and this will be done without objection, and I see no objections. Next, we turn to our administrators' report. Mr. Robinson, good evening.
Good evening, sir. Evening, council. I want to start this evening with a few employee recognitions and then a few announcements. First, I want to recognize Ms. Denise Christmas. About September this year, I announced Denise Christmas would be our interim county administrator. Soon after that, she also became our interim...
Chief financial officer.
Chief financial officer, sorry, I forgot what this was. She became our chief financial officer, so she's been doing double duty for all these months. We've had many conversations, and as of last week, Denise has accepted the position as our chief financial officer full-time. She found that her propensity for numbers, which she enjoys, and her attachment to the finance department is where she can serve Beaufort County the best. So I wanted to make sure council was aware Denise will now be our full-time CFO. And in the interim, while we work with our HR department and advertise for a deputy county administrator, Denise will continue to help out in that role, so you'll see that soon. Thanks so much, Denise, for what you do. This experience, knowledge, and leadership that Denise brings is very rare to find all in one person, so she does a great work for us.
Hallelujah.
Yay, goodness, thank you.
We are very glad to keep her as our CFO because they are rare people, that hard to find.
Did you hear that one?
Yeah. Their county's still looking for CFOs after years of work. So first announcement is this Saturday, January 27 at 10:00 a.m., 1514 Richmond Avenue. This is at the Port Royal Center. This will be the grand opening for our Port Royal Playground. This is the inclusive playground. It's a great event there. Ms. Howard is going to speak to the attendees there, and I'll be there as well, so I want to make sure you know about that event and welcome your presence as well. Also later in the month, the end of this month, the chairman and a few staff members are going to attend a meeting with our local legislative delegation up in Columbia, so we get to have a conversation with our local delegation about some incentives that may help Beaufort County. Following that, in February, the 19th through the 20th, is the South Carolina Association of Counties Connect. It's a legislative action day, so there'll be some more training classes for staff members and some things like that going on, and some more legislative and delegation meetings. I'll be attending that along with several other staff members and perhaps some council members as well. All right. Now, let's see. Let's introduce our first employee to recognize today is Mr. Mark Sutton. I saw Mark in the back a little while ago. Come on up, Mark. So Mark has worked for Beaufort County for almost eight years. His anniversary will be in April. Mark works, he is our senior construction manager, project manager for Capital Projects. His duties are overseeing design and construction of county assets ranging from parks to buildings. Significant projects Mark has worked on or been in charge of include the visitor center at Fort Fremont, Whitehall Park, the entryway in our DSS buildings on Duke Street, Bluffton Library remodel, voters registration building, DSN homes, and numerous other projects and administrative buildings and assets all over Beaufort County. He's currently working on the Port Royal Library project, River Oak Park project, pool upgrades, all kinds of different things. Our team there really work together and get involved in so many different things. Mark is a great asset to have. Something unique about Mark, he worked as a general contractor for many years. At age 50, Mark went back to school, earned his master's degree in architecture, and became a licensed professional architect. That's pretty important to do in elevated age.
You're a SCAD.
That's right. Oh, you went to SCAD graduate as well. Awesome. That's a nice school. I like it there. So as an architect, he's designed quite a few projects. Construction City. Construction City was a project that supported construction training and staging for a nuclear power plant in Jenkinsville, South Carolina. That was a big project.
It was a big.
Awesome.
Twenty buildings.
Twenty buildings. He's the architect of record for the, is that Koyo Bearings, Koyo Bearings Plant that is located in Columbia, South Carolina.
Largest in the world.
Right, that's right. Largest bearing manufacturer in the world. So Mark's direct supervisor is Eric Larson. Eric wrote that Mark has a wealth of knowledge and experience that benefits our county greatly. He's never shy to offer his advice and opinion on projects and to help find solutions, so we thank Mark very much for what he does.
Paul George.
Yeah, I appreciate the honor. It is humbling. I've been in the business a long time. I don't see any end to it, though. I just enjoy working with the county, with the guys in our crew. We have, we've done some really nice projects, some big, some small. A lot of the small ones you don't think about or hear about, but for every large project, there's 100 small ones that we're doing. And at one point, we each had probably 40 projects apiece on our plate, and it's hard to believe, but we keep them from design to construction, so we work back and forth with each other. We'll pass off each other depending on the workload. We have great support from council and from the county, and it's been a joy, really enjoyed it, and thank you for the honor.
Congratulations. Thank you.
A little while ago, we had our public facilities meeting, and on that, on that agenda, there were 15 specific engineering items on that. The engineering team worked hard, Jared's team, infrastructure team, worked hard getting all the paperwork done in early December to bring all those things forward. Mark and Eric and their team, Eric Larson, they're the output of those. A lot of those projects get managed by them, some of the traffic and engineering projects that kind of have their own. But in between that is another group of folks that might be appropriate to recognize, and that's our procurement, purchasing, legal, and finance. All of those documents that it takes to get from this concept, conception through contract through to construction, every one of those go through Dave Thomas, Victoria Moyer, and most of them through our legal team is Brian Holbert. He reviews all those contracts and makes sure they're accurate. So now you kind of have a whole picture of what happens. It's a busy, busy place, so I want to thank them all for what they do. Next, I'd like to introduce you to Amber Black.
Here's Amber.
Amber is a workforce development specialist with Human Resources. She's worked with us once before for a year, left, and came back again. Was it because we were so great?
Yes.
Yes, it was. I set her up for that, sorry. So Amber has helped me a lot personally for a lot of different things, managing some issues with departments and offering some good advice as we move forward. It's always great to listen more than we speak, so I find good people to listen to. It's very helpful. She has been a key player in launching the county's workforce development program. This is NeoGov, am I right? So NeoGov is a really interesting tool to help with training and education as well as our evaluation system, which is really cool. So she implemented NeoGov's learning management system, became a certified facilitator for DISC training. Do you want to talk about DISC? No. DISC is a personnel assessment tool that normally we, the county, would pay for an outside vendor to perform this assessment. Having our in-house vendor means we just pay for the, send it in and get it back, and we have our own assessment individual right on site, so we save a ton of money by using that process. It's a good thing. The DISC system helps our organizations, helps organizations worldwide to create thriving workplaces and cultures through scientifically validated understanding of people. Who's done a DISC before? I've done a bunch of them. They're, they pretty much nail you pretty well, I think, anyway. Amber's provided this training to over 200 county employees to date. Let's see. So she also works, she's been instrumental in assisting departments with climate surveys, provide specialized training for departments at departments' request. Let's see. Amber loves dogs, so do I. Yeah, I got your beat, though. She said she has two rescues. Right now, I have three, and my wife would get a whole farm if we could, if I would let her, but no. Mike?
Yes. I would just like to thank the county for allowing us the resources and the opportunity to be able to develop these types of training programs because I do believe that it helps retain our current staff, and I also think that it helps with attracting new folks to come onboard with the county, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. I'd like to spend just a few minutes and give you a few updates on our DeFuski Island ferry service. Last Tuesday morning, our new provider began providing services for trips a day, or eight trips a day, four round trips a day to DeFuski Island. That started at 7:00 a.m., just like clockwork, just like normal, moving our DeFuski Island residents and guests back and forth from the island. First, I want to address a few of the comments that have been in the news. We, the DeFuski Island Ferry Service has been characterized as a Beaufort County service, so Beaufort County supplements this service. To truly provide this holistic service costs more than $1 million a year. The county supplements this service by ensuring that our DeFuski Island residents, our qualified discounted residents, can use this ferry service at a lower rate, so the cost of the seat is much less expensive for our residents. So the county's investment here is not to cover the whole cost of the ferry. We supplement the cost of the riders going back and forth on the ferry, so there seems to be a little confusion about that. I'll talk about our current contract. So in our, in our contract, it requires those four trips per day, or four round trips per day, at specified times. This is, the new contract is identical to the old contract, the same number of trips per day, the same times per day. The location changed from Buckingham Landing over to Pinkney Island, which is a few hundred yards away, or maybe a little farther than that, but pretty close, just the other side of the river. The contract requires a minimum of a 40-passenger vessel with a climate-controlled enclosure to protect from extreme weather conditions, and the ticket sale price is set for residents. It's in the schedule, and I'll tell you about those. A level one, a level one resident is a 4% taxpayer owner, so they live on the island, and their fee is $4 each way. A level two is a full-time resident non-owner, so this might be someone who rents a place on the island. Their tickets are $5 each way. And then level three is a 6% owner or a non-full-time resident, but they own property on the island, and their rate is $8 each way. And each of those types of categories has an account. When folks make an account, they also identify their dependents of that account, and it's very specific to what a dependent is, someone that lives with them full-time. You know, if my, and my adult kids don't live with me, so my adult kids will not necessarily get a free ride on my personal ferry account because they don't live with me. If they did, they would be considered my dependents, for an example. This is to make sure or to ensure that our provider makes up the difference between what we supplement and what the actual service costs, so the provider really will only start making money when the ferry becomes full in the summertime, right? Some of the other issues, and like I said, that contract is, I won't say word for word, but extremely close to the 2021 contract with the previous provider. Not a lot of changes. One of the things in the, in the old contract and the new contract talks about cargo. The cargo, often when you fly in an airplane, is called baggage, and, right? So when we fly in an airplane, we take our baggage. We get a carry-on, we get a suitcase, right? Anything more than that, we pay extra. On a maritime application, anything we carry on a boat is called cargo, so it still all has the same meaning. You get a carry-on, and you get your piece of luggage. The way boats are rated, this, these boats in particular, let's say if we had 42 passengers, the vessel will be rated for a certain amount of cargo, so a 42-passenger boat is rated for 2,800 pounds of cargo. When you divide the two, it's 66 pounds per person of cargo that each seat hauls, if that makes sense. So when a, when a vessel travels on the water, it has to be balanced right, it has to have the right ratio of seats to the right ratio of cargo, those types of things. So the reason I'm talking about cargo so much is we got a lot of complaints about cargo and how we're going to haul things back and forth. So at present, our new provider, in the contract, provides the same level of service as cargo as our previous provider. They get a carry-on bag, they get a suitcase that they can bring, or they can bring, we call them grocery wagons. So a lot of residents on the island use these kind of collapsible grocery wagons. There's still expectation they can bring their carry-on and bring their grocery wagon just like they have before. Right now is a great time of year to start something new, although it's really cold. Mr. Lawson rode out there on Sunday, and the weather is unpleasant out on the water, that's for sure, but the ridership is really low, so that while we're learning to do a new process and learning to manage it, the ridership and the pressure on it is pretty small. I think a few riders first thing in the morning, two or three or four riders in back. We'll see that increase as we go along. One of the other complaints is about the speed of the boat back and forth. Nothing in our contract, our old contract or our new contract identified any minimum or maximum length of time for the ferry to get back and forth. The speed of the ferry can have anything to do with the weather of the day, with the mood of the captain. It is the captain's vessel when they're, when they're operating the vessel, so they will operate the vessel in a safe manner. Now, the owner-operator of that wants as efficient as possible, and sometimes operating a vessel that size as quickly as possible, they may get folks from one place to the other, but may burn twice as much fuel to achieve that. It is, it is the owner-operator's discretion on how to operate those vessels so that they're, maximize their efficiency. So I think I've, I've heard or read everything from 45 minutes to an hour and a half. Mr. Lawson and I talked, and I think he experienced an hour or an hour and 10 minutes, ish, is about the average trip. It's going to differ every time the ferry goes back and forth based on which way the wind's going, which way the tide's going, and perhaps who's driving the boat. I probably would drive fast and get in trouble, but yeah, it's just me. I heard some, some comments about the old ferry service provided a fifth trip once a week. They called it the Friday night dinner cruise. Our contract is for those four round trips per day. If the previous provider was providing a Friday night trip, that's awesome. The new provider can do the same thing, but it is at the purview of that provider and of the visitors or residents that want to use that. I spoke to the, to the owner-operator this morning, is more than willing to entertain any of those kind of options, but that is really outside of the county's purview and not something we would negotiate. A resident of the island or a group of residents could say, hey, we want to, 20 of us want to go to dinner on Friday night. I guarantee if they called the owner-operator and asked for that, he would negotiate an opportunity for them to make that happen. Not a problem. Let's see. I don't have any, there are some, there are many other kinds of things that are, that are going out there on in the media. I believe we have a well-qualified provider. He's willing to go out of his way and accommodate as best poss, as best as possible, and I don't really want to create a big discussion here, but if you have questions or anything that I might be able to answer now, I'm open to you.
Is there anyone wishes to make a comment?
I'd love to hear from Mr. Lawson. I guess his comment, since I was told that he was going to visit after church yesterday, so...
And I did go over, and obviously the boat that's currently being used is a temporary boat until their, their main boat arrives this week. As Mr. Robinson said, it took about an hour, I think an hour and five minutes to get over there one time and an hour and 10 minutes to come back, so I think that it is a little slower than what the times that were previously that they had with Hag Point. And meeting with the residents up to DeFuski, I was actually there for at least two hours, maybe two and a half hours, and we went through a list of things, and I've got a list of things that we're still going to cover. I kind of sent those to John and Hank today to go back through, and a lot of those things are just the perception of how things are going to operate. I think that Mr. Turner went there last Tuesday and explained what he wanted to do, and I think it created some anxiousness because it might be a little different than what was done previously in how they did things, but I talked to Mr. Turner this morning, as Mr. Robinson did, that we're going to go through this list that I created from yesterday, get answers for all those items, and get those back to the public. And as I, you know, was stated to me from different DeFuski people that have been there a long time is that, you know, whenever Hag Point took over in 2016, there were some of the same things that went on when it came to just making changes and things like that. We are hoping that we can work those out, figure out the differences, get with the provider, and make sure that we're providing a similar service to what they had previously, and try to offer some of the same services. But again, it will be a little different, again, because we've moved locations, and it is a different boat that have going on, so... But again, to get there and get back, I think the biggest question is not really moving people, but it's going to be figuring out, as Mr. Robinson said, the cargo materials that DeFuski so much relies on. That's how it gets over there. A lot of times, people go to the grocery store once a week, once a month, and they need to take their things with them and be able to get on the boat and take them. And now is a good time for us to figure out these issues before it is the busy season and you have, you know, so many more tourists that come and bring even more things. So there's a lot of, a lot of questions that I was brought up yesterday, a lot of things that we'll go through and try to get answers to, and we have those answers to those questions, we'll supply it to everyone here on the council, and again, everyone on DeFuski, again, I probably had 120 people that came to that meeting yesterday. If you look at DeFuski, there's probably 400 full-time residents there, 800 total, 200 probably live in Hag Point, so I had over half of the folks that probably use that service on a regular basis be able to come and voice their opinion and tell me what they thought. I didn't have answers for them, but I told them that I was there to listen, figure out what we needed, and then go back and see what we can do to make this something that that's going to be even better than, than what it was in the past and something for the future that we've got to move forward with.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one last question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
You talked about the contracts being identical. How many type questions can we have if they're exactly the same?
I can't answer, I can't answer that, the questions from residents on why they, why they question when most of these things are the same. I will say that we do, we do have a very good relationship with the Hag Point POA, their chairman and their director. We continue to talk. They were providing a very good level of service, but it was well beyond the scope of work for Beaufort County, so... I thank you for going out there. I appreciate you doing that and talking with them, and if the folks from DeFuski Island are listening, we hear you. We are, we are listening. We are doing our best to make it better for you. We'll continue to work hard, and that was a good time of year because the ridership is low, so by the time summer comes, I think we'll have a smooth operation. Just so you also know, the Manatee, which is the vessel our new provider purchased out of Florida, is in the intercoastal waterway right now. I spoke to him this morning, and I thought it was a one-day trip, but it's a three-day trip. I learned that one of the issues in our, one of the, not issues, but things in our contract as a captain is much like a driver or a pilot of an airplane or a driver of a semi-truck, there's only so many hours a day they can operate, so they can only operate 12 hours a day, so that unless, you know, they put a bunch of captains on that boat and get it here in a day and a half, driving it all day and night. So it's a three-day operation, so we expect it to be here midweek. As soon as it arrives, it already has a COI, which is a certificate of insurance, which is transferable. They've already been working on that, so as soon as it arrives, it can go immediately into service. It's a large vessel, enclosed, air-conditioned, heated, bathrooms onboard. It's a, it's a big machine, so... Well, thank you. Thank you so much. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to move to item number seven. It says it's an approval of the 2023 audit presented by Maudlin and Jenkins.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we're going to move to item number seven. It says it's an approval of the 2023 audit presented by Maudlin and Jenkins, who is our CPA firm. They're going to present, and after their presentation, we are actually going to approve the audit.
Well, good evening, everyone. Hope you all are doing well. Again, my name is David Irwin, and I'm with Maudlin Jenkins. I was the partner who oversaw this year's audit of the county's financial statements. And I certainly appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening to discuss the results of this year's audit. I won't take up too much of your time, but the purpose of this evening's presentation is to provide you all an overview of our independent auditors' report, hit a few of the financial statement highlights, talk about the results of the two compliance reports that we issue in conjunction with the audit, discuss some information that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all, and obviously, to answer any questions that you all may have. Now, the financial statements themselves that have been presented to you all are the responsibility of county's management and members of the council. As your independent external auditors, our responsibility is to express an opinion on these statements. We conduct our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards and governmental auditing standards, and I'm happy to say that we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on this year's report. Again, this is what you want. This is the highest level of assurance that we can provide your external auditor. What this means is that, in our opinion, the financial statements are considered to be fairly presented in all material respects and in accordance with general accepted accounting principles. Again, as part of the audit, there are two compliance reports that we also issue. The first one is a single audit report. A single audit is a compliance audit that is required when an entity has over $750,000 of federal expenditures during the year. You all had approximately $14.6 million of federal expenditures this year, which, again, resulted in us having a single audit on the COVID recovery funds program. As was the case with a financial audit, we are issuing a clean or unmodified opinion on the single audit as well. The second compliance report is the yellow book report. Again, the yellow book report is a report on the county's internal controls and your compliance with various laws and regulations. And I'm pleased to say that we do not have any audit findings reported to you all this year, meaning we noted no material weaknesses or significant efficiencies in the county's internal controls during our audit. And as I mentioned you all before, you are obviously a large county. There's significant financial activity that has to be accounted for. And in addition, with all the new accounting standards that are being implemented each year, and really just how complex the financial reporting process has become, it makes it all the more impressive to be able to present you all an audit that not only is a clean opinion, but with no audit findings. And that's certainly something you should be proud of, and to me, it speaks volumes about the hard work done by your staff. You know, when a government has turnover, as you all have had over the past year, it's not unusual to see some things slip through the cracks from an audit standpoint, or an audit be delayed. We experienced none of that this year. Denise, Christine, Bryson, the entire finance department really did a great job of getting everything that we needed, answering all of our questions, and again, just providing us the information that we needed in order to meet the 1231 deadline. So again, just want to thank your staff for all their hard work this year. Now, for a brief overview of your financial statements. Again, you all prepare what is called an annual comprehensive financial report, otherwise known as an ACTFOR. Now, ACTFOR includes additional information that goes above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. This document is submitted annually to the Government Finance Officer Association, otherwise known as GFOA, where they put it through a pretty stringent review process. Not only their professional staff, but they also have a special review committee that looks at your document. And when they look at the county's ACTFOR, their goal is not to assess the financial health of the county. What they want to do is make sure that the necessary information is in this document so the readers of your financial statements can do so themselves. And per their review, the GFOA has once again awarded the county the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for fiscal year '22, and that certificate is included in this year's report. And this is the 14th year in a row that the county has received a certificate. So congratulations to you all on that. It's a very impressive document, and again, just another example of you all raising the bar and going above and beyond the basic financial reporting requirements. You know, again, as you look through the financial statements, you know, one section I always like to point out is the Management's Discussion Analysis, otherwise known as the MDNA. This begins on page five. It's right after our audit opinion. And I strongly encourage everyone to read this section. The purpose of the MDNA is to make it easier for a broader audience to use and better understand your financial statements. And it does this by providing a narrative explanation of the financial statements from management's perspective. So if you ever have a question about any fluctuations in financial activity, anything unique or unusual that occurred during the year, oftentimes, you could find your answer within the MDNA. In addition, there's quite a bit of comparative information in this section, meaning financial information for not only fiscal years '23, but also FY '22 is included in this section as well. To me, it gives you, it adds a lot of value to have that comparative information. It gives you a much better understanding of the current year activity when you have those prior year numbers there for comparative purposes. So again, if you can, I would strongly encourage everyone to read the MDNA. Now, the county's basic financial statements, they are broken down into three components. The first of which is your government-wide statements. Again, the government-wide statements, they provide a broad view of the county's operations in a manner similar to what you would see in a private sector business. You all have two columns, you know, all the funds of the county are combined into two columns, one for your governmental activities and one for your business-type activities. And we have a slide here that summarizes the county's financial activity from the government-wide perspective. And as you can see here, the county ended the year with assets and deferred outflows of resources of $1.1 billion. Of that amount, approximately $603 million are your capital assets, net accumulated appreciation. Again, capital assets, that's the land, buildings, machinery, equipment, et cetera, that are owned by the county. You all also had around $438 million in cash investments on hand as of June 30. Total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources around $390 million. Of that amount, around 305 are long-term in nature, meaning they are not due within the next fiscal year. Looking at revenues, they were around $296 million this year. That's an increase around $8 million compared to FY '22. Expenses had a pretty good jump. They increased approximately $53 million for a total of $253 million for the year. This resulted in ending net position of approximately $702 million, which that's an increase of $42.5 million for the year. And again, net position, that's not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. Net position is essentially the difference between assets and liabilities. So again, you know, another good year for the county from an entity-wide perspective is you all were able to increase your net position by 6%. So in looking at the financial statements, you all have a strong balance sheet and, again, are in good shape financially. The second component of your financial statements are the fund-level statements. Again, this is what you all typically see throughout the year. And the fund-level statements, they focus on individual parts of the government and report your operations in more detail than that of the entity-wide statements. And, you know, of all the funds that the county has, if I'm in your shoes, my primary focus is on the general fund. Again, the general fund is the main operating fund of the county, and therefore, accounts for the majority of your revenues received and funds expended. And we have a couple charts in these next few slides. The first chart breaks down the general fund's revenues for the year. Total revenues for the general fund were approximately $170 million. That's around a $32 million increase compared to prior year. You know, as you can see on this chart, obviously, the vast majority of the general fund's revenues are derived from property taxes, which totaled around $113 million for the year, and that represented around 66% of the total revenues for the general fund. A couple other significant sources of revenue worth mentioning. You all had charges for services of just under $15 million, and intergovernmental revenue of approximately $10.6 million for the year. This next chart presents the general fund's expenditures by function. Total expenditures around $173 million. That's an increase of approximately $52 million compared to FY '22. You know, again, as you would expect, public safety and general government are your, represent the majority of these expenditures. Public safety was around $57 million, and it accounted for around 33% of the general fund's total expenditures. And general government expenditures were approximately $70 million. So in total, the general fund's fund balance had a slight decrease this year of approximately $4 million for an ending balance of $82.6 million for the year. This next chart, it shows the fund balance history of the county's general fund over the past five years. You know, these charts are always interesting. To me, they speak volumes. It's always interesting to kind of reflect back on where you were compared to where things currently stand. And, you know, as you can see on this chart, you all have done a great job these past three years of increasing your fund balance. You know, again, while your fund balance did have a slight decrease this year, the overall increase over the past three years has been pretty impressive. So again, congratulations to you all on that. Again, like net position that I mentioned earlier, fund balance is not what you all have in the form of cash for discretionary spending. You know, again, fund balance is merely the difference between assets and liabilities, only a portion of which is available cash. Additionally, one thing to keep in mind, you know, the general fund incurs expenditures of approximately $14.4 million per month. So you all ended the year with an unassigned fund balance equal to around four and a half months' worth of your operating expenditures. That's a good fund balance, that's a strong fund balance. But again, with you all having a June 30 year-end, that fund balance is needed to get you through the months of July through November, when your revenues are typically down, you know, before you get your property tax revenue. So again, a strong fund balance for you all, four and a half months of operating expenditures. GFOA, they recommend anywhere between five to seven months' worth of operating expenditures. So, you know, you all are right in that line. A few other funds I just want to briefly mention are the county's four enterprise funds, which are your Stormwater Fund, your Beaufort Executive Airport, the Hilton Head Island Airport Fund, and the Solid Waste and Recycling Fund. Again, enterprise funds are used to account for operations in a manner similar to that of a private sector business. You know, the objective of these funds would be self-sufficient and to generate, again, sufficient operating revenues to cover their operating expenses. And again, the chart on this slide shows your operating revenues and expenses for these funds, and I'm happy to say that all four of your enterprise funds generated operating income this year. So again, that's certainly what you want to see out of these funds, and all of them are in good shape financially. One final item to discuss, again, as I mentioned earlier, is just certain items that the auditing standards requires that we communicate to you all. Again, with you all receiving a clean opinion, no audit findings, the information on this slide is essentially formality, but we did receive full cooperation from county management and staff. There were no disagreements with management on any kind of accounting or financial reporting related issues. There were no uncorrected misstatements. And again, we are independent of the county as required by governmental auditing standards. And with that, let's see if I has any specific questions. That concludes my presentation. But again, as you can tell, when you look at your financial statements, there's a lot of information in this report. What I've tried to do is just hit the highlights of what I think is the most important to you all. But again, want to thank your staff one more time for all their hard work this year. We certainly appreciate the opportunity to be of service to you all and look forward to working in the future.
Great. Is there any questions by council members?
How many years have you done our audit, your firm?
I think this is our seventh year.
Okay, thanks, just curious.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry to hear you.
Seven.
Seven, oh, seven, oh. But you don't send the same person every time?
No, we rotate. We can rotate, you know. We have so many people, part of our, members of our firm that spend 100% of their time auditing state-level governments. We audit 700 governments throughout the southeast. So while a lot of firms audit governments as a way to keep their people busy outside of tax season, there's a certain section of our firm, we spend 12 months out of the year auditing state-level governments. So we can rotate partners, we can rotate staff, we can rotate managers when we see fit, and we do that periodically.
Thank you.
Mr. Glover?
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of concerns. They're not really concerned, but I just want to share some things. When it comes to property tax, I am really looking forward to the county having leaning more on commercial property tax versus residential as also funding for the county and the school district. You don't break down the commercial versus residential in your reports, do you?
We do not. It's just property taxes in total.
You just kind of call it property tax. It'd be good to know the difference, and I guess we could get that from the treasurer's office and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, that information's easily available, it's just, it's not broken down.
Yeah, I just like to tease that because I want to see this county move more to commercial property versus residential so much. The other concern I have has always been on the fund balance, and you talked about that, having five, six, eight months of reserve funds, et cetera, et cetera. It would be nice to know through a cash flow experience, where is that trigger, where revenue is coming in that you don't have to have that size of fund balance? I don't know whether five, six months is a good thing or not, but, you know, I'd like to see that fund balance just a little less, but also recognizing that if we don't have to issue tax anticipation notes and stuff, it's always good because we don't have to borrow the money. We got the funds, we can use it, and I think that's what you're really alluding to, making sure that we have enough fat cash so that we can handle our expenses till the revenues start coming in in January. So I understand that, but it'd be good to know, you know, where's that mark of deblocation where we can have less money in our fund balance moving forward and stuff, so. See, I don't know exactly how much money we need to have in fund balance. It's been increasing, like you showed on your slide, every year for the last five years, ever since I've been on council. I think I got on council, it was $25 million, I think, and it helped us when Matthew was here to be able to fund that without, you know, waiting or borrowing till the government money started coming in. So it helped with that and stuff. I understand all that and stuff. I just need to know a balance and act for us, for me.
Well, like I mentioned earlier, the government officers, the Government Finance Officer Association, GFOA, which again, is the organization that you submit your financial statements to for certification, again, they recommend a fund balance anywhere between five to seven months of operating expenditures. Again, you all have around four and a half months, so I mean, you're right on the cusp of what they recommend. Your fund balance is going to vary from month to month. If you all were December 31 year-end, I would imagine that it would be completely different than it being a June 30 year-end. But again, as I mentioned earlier, the general fund encourages expenditures of $14 million a month. So it's a strong fund balance, but again, with you all, with your June 30 year-end, that fund balance is needed to get you through the months of July through November. And you alluded to something else earlier that I think is worth mentioning again. You know, from the pandemic of a couple years ago to the economic downturn of 15, 16, 20 years ago, whatever it was, to weather-related issues that sometimes arise due to, you know, you all being on the coast. If I'm in your shoes, it's comfort to know that you all have a strong fund balance as of year-end.
What do you?
There's really not a right or wrong answer there, per se. But again, I just kind of allude back to what GFOA recommends, and you all are right in that range.
Okay, thank you. Tom, did you have a question?
No, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I would ask a member of council to make a motion to now approve our 2023 audit as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Lawson makes the motion?
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Do the motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Saying none, this will be accepted without objection, and congratulations to our auditors for, again, doing it within the timeframe, and especially to our staff for 14 years in a row of being able to produce an audit. It is significant. Now, I have one little question. What GASB are we at now?
100.
100?
100.
Okay. I started with GASB 34. Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I do think the staff needs to...
I said that.
Yeah, I know you said it, but I think, yeah. Would want to give them a standing ovation, too.
It is their report card.
Can I just say one thing? So I've noticed you challenged me a little bit whenever I do a company report meeting. Last year you did, and a few months ago, you said, well, how much is fund balance? You know how much you're... And what did I say? I said it'll either stay flat or decrease.
Yeah, decrease.
Is it?
Yes, you did. I noticed that.
Okay, we are at our first citizen comments. These are for items that are on the agenda. The second session is for items off-agenda. We do have two ladies from DeFusky Island that wish to address... We do have two ladies from DeFuski Island that wish to address a non-agenda item, but with council's permission, I would like to have them speak now so that they do not have to stay overnight, as they might have to. So, um, we have, uh, three people who are going to speak. Uh, the first one, uh, I don't know, Deb or Denise, who wants to go first?
Thank you, Jim. I'll go first. Um, I was going to play a news video for you. It all queued up. It would show, uh, a meeting with, with over a hundred people who were talking to Mr. Lawson yesterday.
Okay, I'm going to stop you there. I want to hear what you are bringing to the table. We, we all saw that news video.
Yes, sir. I was about to say I'm not going to do that anymore. Um, I do hope everybody has seen this. You folks have seen me here before. I've come before the council for a number of years. I've always tried to be level-headed and, and respectful. I honestly want to cry when I sit here and I've heard what Mr. Lawson has to say, what Mr. Robinson had to say, there are so many things that were, are not correct. Um, my phone is blowing up from people back in DeFuski who are saying, tell them this, tell them that. What I can tell you is that this ferry system is not something that can be tinkered with, that we can do some improvements, that by the summer we'll have it, uh, even better than the previous system, as, as, as we've been told. This ferry system is a disaster. It's an absolute catastrophe, and it is hurting our community. You guys, you came, a lot of you came to DeFuski this past year. You had to look around. You had to see that these, that the people that this affects are not wealthy people. These are our working people of the island, the people that make this island work. We have poor people, we have elderly people. This fer, this ferry system is not safe. We have a new ferry provider who gave incorrect information when he did the application, including saying he had two boats and pictures that currently are used by Hague Point that he doesn't have. Where are they? Doesn't have it. His, the contract was awarded him on, in part on the basis of having those boats. No boats. Now we've got a glorified pontoon boat. We keep hearing about another boat that's going to show up sometime. We need two boats. Any nine-year-old on DeFuski can tell you, you can't just have one boat to run a, a ferry service. They constantly break down. They have Coast Guard inspections, they have insurance inspections. We need two boats. All we're hearing is sometime we're getting a second one that's better than this, this boat right now that's not even safe. The Coast Guard has had to intervene twice now because they're open kerosene and propane heaters ten feet away from each other. For God's sakes, on a rocky boat, it would, the whole thing could blow up. Why, who would do this? What kind of person runs a ferry system like that where they have this type of, of safety concerns? Mr. Lawson has a lot of problems. This is not something that can be fixed with noodling away at the issue. Your contract has a 30-day opt-out clause. Our island unanimously asked Mr. Lawson, exercise that clause. This is a bad contract. You're hurting people. Uh, it's going to kill our economy on the island because of the nature of, of the, the lack of resources that this contractor has. The fees on these people are being charged at two thousand dollars a year. This contract has to be withdrawn. You made a mistake. A bigger mistake is letting this contract go forth.
Thank you.
I'm sorry to be so emotional, but it's a, you know, it's a terrible thing. Thank you.
Deb? Uh, you're done? Is, is Denise going to speak?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Denise Gilbert, and I'm the owner of an income rental property located at 92 Avenue of the Oaks on DeFuski Island. I'm speaking as a rental property owner to express my extreme concern over the recent change on January 16th in ferry service from the ferry operated by Hague Point to service by an inexperienced and unprepared ferry operator, Low Country Ferry. Full-time residents and DeFuski business owners grave concerns over their survival on the island, given the ferry service change mirrors concerns by property owners. Additionally, we're concerned about a loss of rental property income, property value, and the future of DeFuski as a viable tourism destination. It is my understanding that the owner of Low Country Ferry, Neil Turner, even after signing the contract, was unaware of the number of tourists who would need, uh, ferry service. The majority of guests who have in the past come to DeFuski have used the public ferry as their source of transportation to the island. We're coming up on the start of what historically has been a very busy tourist season on DeFuski, seeing hundreds of thousands of tourists each year, both day visitors and guests staying at DeFuski rental properties. How those tourists will get to DeFuski is now in great question. This threatens property owners and all DeFuski businesses. In addition to the liability, to the ability for Low Country Ferry to even handle the level of tourist transportation, it is my understanding that guest cargo, including food, would arrive separately from guests once a day and be deposited at undisclosed location. Guests would have to get transportation back to that location to pick up everything that they brought over. The change would be devastating to tourism along with the question as to whether Low Country Ferry can even handle the demands of the level of tourist traffic that goes over to DeFuski. Travel time on the ferry has increased since Low Country Ferry took over, and the safety of their vessels is in question. Mark Lawson stated at yesterday's town hall meeting on DeFuski that DeFuski residents had been spoiled with the level of service Hague Point previously provided. As a property owner, I would not consider it spoiled for me to want to have my guests have safe, convenient, cost-effective, and timely transportation for their families and goods brought to DeFuski. I have spoken to business owners who all echo that they would likely not be able to maintain their businesses if the level of visitor traffic to DeFuski decreases. All DeFuski businesses are tourism-dependent, including restaurants, artists, transportation, rental properties, activities, and golf cart rentals. These businesses employ residents of DeFuski, so the cascading effect is potentially devastating. The property loss of revenue for businesses and island residents is mirrored by what could potentially be a steep drop in property values and rental income for property owners and a reduction of tax revenue paid to Beaufort County. Everyone's livelihood is threatened by this change. I'm sure that all of the implications of what seemed like choosing the cheapest ferry vendor were not even imagined and taken into consideration. Residents, business owners, and property owners are all on the precipice of devastating consequences for this action. Please seriously consider canceling the contract with the county. I will be counsel.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hoagland, you wish to speak to council about an item on the agenda?
Skip Hoagland, Jenkins Island. Mr. Passamit Reagan Principal, you and a majority of this council continue to vote for the illegal issuance of millions of tax funds that also are used illegally by the nonprofit chambers, the CBBS, and DMOs, that are also violating many state and federal IRS 501(c)(6) nonprofit tax codes and laws. Also, you fund other nonprofits and do so with no contracts spelling out the legal use with proper terms and conditions, zero transparency, accountability, and proven performance metrics, no forensic audits, and worse, these chambers refuse to show this council how all these illegal millions of tax funds have been used. This is not only absurd, it's a violation to your campaign promises and your fiduciary responsibility as elected officials and taxpayers proxy who trusted all of you. My lawyers and team have presented all the undisputed evidence to you. Why does this council continue to ignore, not comply, and allow all these law violations to continue? Don't you think it's time to stop the town lawyers and employees' control, and you take back control and hire the professionals needed to clean this up? Master, Mr. Passamit, do you agree you were elected to comply to all laws, not pick and choose what suits you? Also, why does this council allow fraudulent budgets and year-end tax returns, uh, to be hired and controlled by the employees and lawyers? The fact is, you are only seeing the numbers they want you to see. None of you are CPAs nor understand what you are presented. This is why this council must hire a totally independent outside audit firm that fully understands and specializes in the proper and legal government operations and controls. I contend, the Baldwin and Jenkins CPA firm is, is submitting a fraudulent, incomplete audit and does not identify the numbers that identify waste and crimes. It was totally fraud. We need a forensic audit firm better made up of former FBI agents to get this county back on track. The school district and our treasurer who sued you must undergo a forensic audit immediately. This council must become a legally functioning county government and stop being controlled by the town managers and lawyers and the CPAs that work for you and taxpayers. We don't work for them. Does anyone in this council or any taxpayer in this room or any lawyer disagree with my facts? If you can't, why don't you clean it up? Folks, this full-power employees and weak part-time council political system is, is not working. It's failing us. We need a full-time, honest, CP, CEO-type chairman who has the high, the, the power to hire and fire. We need to change this whole thing as a mess. And DeFuski Island should have never been developed. It's a nightmare, and it'll never be fixed, and it'll continue to be a nightmare for the rest of our lives.
Thank you. Okay, that's our public comments. We're now at our, um, section of committee and liaison reports. Is there any member of council that wishes to make a report?
Just a brief one, Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Mr. Reeves?
Um, the airport on Hilton Head Island, the terminal expansion is underway and going to be going pretty well, I hear. And the second thing that we have worked on through the airport board and our, um, staff is, um, St. James Baptist Church. And those discussions in that project is moving pretty well as well. At that point, I'll turn it over.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Taber?
So I'm, I'm going to reiterate a little bit of what Jared said. I attended the county transportation committee as a liaison. They had updates from SCDOT, talking about the completed roads, the resurfacing projects, and then Jared went over in the last committee meeting, the rejuvenator, the surfacing, uh, the Bluffton Parkway, those kinds of things, looking at a year seven total of 5.1 million dollars. They also talked about the infamous 170 Triangle Project. They've extended the left-turn lanes onto 462 from 170. It's still not enough. They still back up, but done it. And they added a second left-turn lane from Argent Boulevard. The next focus will be 278 and 170 ramps intersection. That action will begin soon, and what was interesting is, we partner with SCDOT, Jasper County, and Harderville on that. So that's a good collaboration. He talked about the law enforcement center and the 278 Bridge. We've requested municipal consent from Hilton Head due January 31st. We did get, the committee got kudos from SCDOT. They commented that they are the, the best committee in South Carolina as far as getting work done, being recognized, thorough, forward-thinking, so it was very good for them. And I'm going to send all of you the county transportation committee transportation plan for your light reading when you have nothing to do. Then I did the library board, and I want to point out this, I'm just going to give you a little bit, um, conversation on that. Current impact fees are going to be used for the Bluffton Library, 4.2 million. Port Royal Branch is under construction. To date, we have spent 391,034 dollars on materials, and 60% of that is hoopla. How many here have gone on hoopla? Yes, if you haven't, get on it, you're going to love it. Um, we accepted revisions to their bylaws, and this is exciting, the pickup lockers will be at Burton Wells. And right now, they're waiting for the exterior wrap to be approved by the county. It'll be funded by the Public Library Foundation. Uh, they thank county council for, uh, moving forward with the purchase of May River Property. That's on tonight's agenda. And just for everyone in the audience, 24,482 visitors to our libraries in December. Our library director is sitting right there. Raise your hand, Amanda. She does great work for us. They had 88 programs offered, 41,629 items checked out out of five branches. That's really good. Eight, 19,867 downloadables. So our libraries are very intact with our communities and moving forward. And I have one more, the school board meeting, they elected their officers, they stayed the same. The operations committee updated projects and approved some vendor contracts, and they have finished the review of books. So they are returning Speak and The Handmaid's Tale are going back to circulation. Stamped and The Lovely Bones will be in circulation for grade 612 only, and The Perks of Being a Wallflower and The Kite Runner will be for 9 through 12. And then they've directed the superintendent to reevaluate this form parents can use to opt out of letting their children take things out at the media centers. And then finally, a reminder to our constituents, this Wednesday will be Chat with Council. On the South Side, it will be 6:00 PM Hilton Head Library. And then on Thursday, February 29th, 6:00 PM, will be Chat with Council right here. All residents are welcome. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to brag a little bit more about the library and Friends of the Beaufort Library. David Brockton and I were lucky enough to be there Saturday when they dedicated the storybook walks on the Spanish Moss Trail. It's a great, it's a great story of collaboration between, um, our county library system, Spanish Moss Trail, and the Friends of the Beaufort Library. It was cold, but we, I think there must have been 70 people there. It was good ground.
Excellent. And, um...
I, I attended, um, the Beaufort, Beaufort County Economic Development Meeting last week, and Ashley Feaster, I don't know if she spoke to you at the Converge Summit, but council needs to appoint two more people to SCA, or, I don't know if you're aware of that.
We are taking that up next month.
Okay, all right. And, um, transportation, I also attended with, uh, Tab, and I found an error on the transportation committee. John Verro, um, he's in District 10, so there's still a District 11 open. And I understand that, uh, Mr. Dietrich Advogat from District 11 sent his application last month. He's extremely qualified for the position. He was with the World Bank Infrastructure. He, uh, worked with the Port Authority and the airports in New York, New Jersey. Um, he was a New York Urban Development Corp. Also, um, he did property developments over in Europe. He has a bit, masters in business, and, um, I, I don't know if I, do I need to set a motion that we ask for his application, or what do we have to do with that?
Nothing.
Understand what the procedure's going to be.
Paul, I agree with you, he is in District 11.
Yeah, but...
Dietrich, yeah.
But that's empty.
Okay.
District, Mr. John Verro, Verro is in District 10, not 11. That was on the sheet that Tab had.
That was the...
That is, it's just an error. It just needs to be corrected.
That was a swap.
Pardon me?
It was a swap.
It was a swap?
Yeah, the committee asked.
What do you mean a swap? Swap?
He was, he was approved to serve out of his district.
Oh, he was approved to serve out of his district?
Yes.
Ms. Brock, can I ask you a question then?
Oh, I didn't know.
If there's somebody in the district that applies, why wouldn't they have preferential look?
Um, that happened before this individual applied, and the member, um, the swap was, uh, prior to the member applying.
So Dietrich did not apply in the proper amount of time, is what you're saying?
Right. Oh.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Oh, but, but, you know, on a committee, we could have two people from the same district on that committee? If the chair, I guess the chairman approves that?
The chairman approved that.
Would we want to entertain that, though? I think Paul is asking, to get Dietrich on and...
The chairman, because there, there was no applicant from District 11, someone applied, but they were from District 10, and the chair of the transportation committee recommended that individual. We went through the process and approved that individual.
But who was in District 10 before that?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure this current council approved that swap.
Yes. Oh, they did? Oh, we did?
Yeah, we all, we all voted on that.
Oh, okay.
That swap. And it was approved by...
Dietrich wasn't involved at that point, then he didn't have his application.
No, but I'm saying this council sitting here right now approved that swap.
So is that, then District 10 is open?
No, there's...
There's two from District 10.
But Charles Perry is District 10, is that correct? Charles Perry?
Not sure. He may be.
If you want to talk afterwards, we can hold a...
Okay.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other questions? Okay, we're ready for the public hearing and action items. I would ask a member of council for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, is there any question? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 11 came from today's special call Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee. It is the approval, so I'm gonna ask a member of council to make a motion for the approval of the appointment of Tommy Harmon Jr. to the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a first term of four years that expires in 2028. And the reappointment of Eugene Richardson-Labrousse to the Beaufort Memorial Hospital Board of Trustees for a second term of four years that expires in 2028.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion. A second.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, these two gentlemen will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 12, as we noted, really came from today's Public Facilities Committee meeting. It is the approval of an ordinance, so I'm gonna ask for a motion by a member for the approval of an ordinance for a 2024 transportation sales and use tax referendum.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Tabernick, duly motioned and seconded. Now, this means that this will be approved as a first reading of the ordinance. We will have three readings and a public hearing before this is fully adopted. This is not cast in stone at this point in time. Mr. Chairman? Yes, let me go through Ms. Howard.
We did make two amendments.
Yes, we did make two amendments that have been adopted by the Public Facilities and Administration Committee that have moved forward, that will be part and parcel of this agenda, okay? We've taken certain wording out, we put certain monies in. Okay? Next, Mr. Reeves, you had a comment?
Oh, no, the only comment I have is on the outline, number 12 is the Finance Committee, it should be the Public Service.
It was the Public Facilities Administration Committee. We referenced that at the beginning of the meeting. Anyone else?
Do you want me to go last or just go ahead?
You can certainly go ahead.
So, this just came out of the committee today, I wanted to brush up on a couple of things I said in the committee before this. So, I apologize for you that were here earlier, if it sounds a little repetitive. Jared gave a presentation about the numbers on it. So, just so for the public record, it is 15 years, 1% sales tax at $1.625 billion, whichever one comes first. With that said, this isn't a raise of a tax because this is scheduled to take effect after our green space referendum comes to an end. Green space referendum does not go any longer than December 31st and this wouldn't take place until May 1st. If it passes in November, in 2024, it wouldn't take place till 2025, May 1st. If you guys go back, remember about two years ago, this is a lot of the debate we had when we came up with the green space referendum. We originally talked about transportation tax and then we shifted towards green space. The whole point behind green space, which is at least my idea and I'm sure a few others here agree, was we've been, I've said it a million times before, we've been chasing the tail. We're just trying to fix things that have already happened over and over and over again and we can't get ahead of it. The green space referendum, we passed to help lower the density, the future density here in Beaufort County. That was step one. I always said publicly during that, that we plan to come back in 2024 with a transportation tax because that's step two. Now, when we have a system in place and a tool that is gonna be able to slow down growth, now our job is to catch up on our roads. That's where this comes into play. We're currently at a 7% sales tax. If this passes, we would stay at a 7% sales tax when that drop-off happens. There's actually gonna be a four-month period of 6%, I believe. And it'll kick right back in right before tourist season. The numbers that we've looked at, usually, there's a couple of people, you know, we debate back and forth, that somewhere between 40 to 45% is paid by tourists, correct?
Yes.
It's usually what we, the rule of thumb. So, almost 50% is paid by tourists that come in to Beaufort County. With that said, the 15 years is definitely a long number, it's a big number to take in, but there is reasons behind that. If you look in what the project list entails and how we have broken this down to the community and how many big projects we're planning to undertake, that's what it's gonna take to get this done, to play catch-up for the decisions that were made prior to this county council. I do wanna make an amendment, with that being said, to Section 2.3, just adding some language into that to secure basically what our outline is for Beaufort County Council and how we have this scheduled to make sure that this money is being used the way it's supposed to. And that it comes to county council, so it's transparent for all Beaufort County voters. Because if you'll look, there is a lot of different departments this money could go to. So, this amendment will make sure that it's clear that it still comes through county council because we're the ones up here advocating for this. We're the ones that are gonna put together the team to manage these funds. So, with that said, I'd like to make an amendment to Section 2.3 and add that all proceeds of the sales and use tax, I'm sorry, all proceeds of the sales and use tax and all proceeds of any bonds payable therefrom shall be held by county until the county council has approved the allocation and expenditure of the funds for the projects and preparations of the projects as further identified herein. The reason behind this is exactly like I said, we have a lot of different big pots that are planning to go to certain locations. I don't know if it's possible, if we could pull that up for the public, Sarah? If not, it is in the backup documents. And adding this language into it, make sure that the county can make sure that those funds aren't wasted in areas and that we are truly doing what's best for the whole county with this funds. And making sure that the money does go to the appropriate locations. So, with that said, that is the motion, if it is entertained by the council.
Okay. Alright, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Kevney?
I would make one point, the sentence that Councilman Logan just referred to is added to the very end of Section 2.3.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna vote against this, simply because I think, I know the intention here, but I think there's, there's the buy-in from various communities into this referendum. And I wanna make sure that we have support in all entity and allowing those entities some independence in receiving and deciding what they would want for their jurisdiction. So, I'm gonna not, at this time, support this motion, it's on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'm of the same mindset as Councilman Glover. I think that local governments are the best place for the, especially regarding some of these things like sidewalks and pathways and other decisions for the green belts. At this time, I will not vote for that amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna have to second these two here as well with the same. We can't vote for this.
I think, they're talking about the amendment.
Amendment.
Right.
Not the referendum.
No, not the referendum.
Make sure...
Right, they're talking about the monies that are in there.
Thank you.
So, one of the things stated before, anybody else? Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kevney or Mr. Robinson, can municipalities go out for their own referendums to raise money with inside their municipalities?
I'll defer to our bond council, but I think they can.
Sure, they do.
So, municipalities could do a referendum to authorize like the issuance of general obligation bonds. There's not a mechanism for them to impose like a sales tax within their municipality. But they could certainly do, you know, a referendum, say, city X is approving general obligation bonds and amounting to exceed $50 million to do some...
For a project.
For a project in the city, that's right.
So, and this is exactly why I'm advocating for this, we're the ones taking the step and putting it out for the county. We're the ones putting it on the line, just like we did on the green space referendum. Willing to go out and advocate and put something this big and this large out here, I wanna make sure that the job's done properly. I've never said before, I've told you guys before, I'm not in the construction business, I'm not gonna tell you how to build it or anything like that. But I do know that we know where we plan to take this county and decisions we make is gonna affect that. And we're the ones making this decision now to put this on a ballot. And we're the ones that went to Jared and his team in February and said, we wanna get this out to the public and get this starting to be debated by the end of the year, which they met that goal. And now it's our job to make sure that this is followed through. So, I'm sorry that I have a hard time saying municipality A is gonna get $40 million to do whatever they wanna do with it, that goes outside the guidelines, and municipality B gets $30 million, so be it, so be it. And we have no say-so on that whatsoever when we're the ones coming up here debating for that. Because right now, the way it's worded, without this amendment, it gives them the ability to possibly do that.
It's my, Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding, there would be a committee similar, somewhat to what Green Space is set up to oversee it, and I think a non-partisan, non-elected committee, but maybe perhaps or not, that's still to be determined, membership to oversee it, that would give the county a lot of, a lot of control, even without this amendment. And I still think that, you know, the local governments are the ones that are gonna have to decide where their priorities are and then bring it to this committee to be prioritized. You know, it's still to be determined, but I think it's possible.
I understand that, but committees were not supposed to have a say-so in those committees. That is the point, when we put a committee out there, they're put in that place so we are not in control.
They're making recommendations.
Correct, but that recommendation does not have to come back to county council.
It does with green space.
Correct, but it does not in this document the way it's currently written.
I would just disagree, I think a local municipality can decide based on this overarching committee recommendations. And I'm sure we'll use the county being the driver in transportation countywide, we'll use the county's expertise and the county's transportation engineering to all, every extent that we can, with the local governments too.
Mr. Kevney?
Mr. Chairman, the recommendation that Councilman Howard just referenced is in the recommendation from the committee, but that provision is not in the ordinance.
We could add it.
Could make a motion to amend the ordinance to add that kind of a requirement in here, I would think.
Mr. Chairman, yes, the committee recommended, because I sat in on all those, they recommended an oversight, a citizen oversight committee, similar to what the school district has. But I'm gonna agree with Mr. Cunningham, I think, and the committee can make a recommendation in their oversight, but that's it, then they send it to council. And I think we need to be responsible to our citizens to have the final control. We're not gonna, you know, do horrible things to the cities, but we have to have final control. We are responsible for that money in the end.
I just, I just want some clarification, if you don't mind, Mr. Kevney. Reading here 3.2, Section 3.2 on page 265. It would appear that outside agencies and political subdivisions, which would include the municipalities, if they're set to receive fund from the sales and use tax, they must submit the request of funding as if it was gonna go through the budget ordinance process anyway. So, wouldn't that revert back to the control to the county anyway with this language already in here? I just wanna make sure I'm reading that correct, and I know I seconded the language on that, but just wanna make sure.
Again, I'll have to defer to...
I'm sorry, where are you?
Section 3.2A, page 265 in our material. I believe it's A and, 3.2A and B, it talks about the allocation of the funds for outside agencies and political subdivisions.
It comes to county council.
And even prior to us getting it, the state treasurer is the one that actually collects the money and then allocates it to a quarter.
Right, remits it quarterly to us.
So, there's already kinda layers of protection in place, it looks like.
In my read of 3.2, it's 3.2 plus proposed amendment work together. 3.2 specifically talks about the budgeting. So, I mean, we could certainly provide some more language for 3.2 at second reading if we're trying to incorporate both. But it talks about the proposed budget. So, I'm not sure that's as clear as it could be in terms of allocation for specific projects, honestly.
But for those projects, they would still have to put for...
That's right.
Okay.
In Section 3.3.
3.2A, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other discussion? So, before we take a vote, summarization is, the amendment was to ensure that the county council has the final say for the dollars that are going to be expended by the other agencies besides the county. Is that a good summarization?
Allocation and expenditure.
The amendment actually would apply to all expenditures, including the counties. So, come back to the county council regardless if it's a county expenditure or expenditure by a different political subdivision. There's not a distinction drawn between, for example, a city expenditure and a county expenditure.
Because the sales tax referendum is a county referendum.
And then if...
Municipal referendum.
Excuse me, and then if the, if the second question, the general obligation bond question passed, those are general obligation bonds of Beaufort County.
Right.
Just that the intended repayment source is the sales tax, but those are Beaufort County bonds that are being issued.
Okay.
I just have a question, maybe you, it seems from what Councilman Bartholomew said, 3.2 does the same thing as what Councilman Cunningham made the amendment.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I mean, I would wanna look at it a little bit more, quite honestly. I mean, 3.2 specifically talks about the budgeting. So, I would question whether a project could, could have the budget approved, but that the project itself hasn't been approved yet, or at least the priority for the expenditure of that fund. So, I wanna give you the right answers, I'd like to look about the amendment in this and give a recommendation before a second reading if, unless the amendment...
If we, if we can, I would like both of you to withdraw your motion until there is a little further research on this, whether 3.2 actually accommodates what you are saying. Because the other thing that we want to do is to add in the committee, which was part and parcel of the committee suggestion for the citizens committee. So, there is still work to do. We've done several iterations of it already. I think you need to put it all together because this is adopting this, which will go to county council's next meeting for the first reading of this. Or is this the first reading?
This is the first reading.
This would be the first reading. And certainly, we can make any changes after you see every single thing that has been discussed, put together and changed so that we have it all at one time, if that is acceptable to Mr. Cunningham and Ms. Howard.
With all due respect, I'm gonna have to decline. The reason for that is, we just approved this earlier, a couple hours ago, with that document already in there. If you guys believe that that does satisfy that, then it does not hurt us to add it again and reiterate it at the beginning of this contract. So, if you're saying that what's written in there currently is doing exactly what I'm saying, then us reiterating it again at the beginning of the contract to make it clear does not hurt us at all. You already supported it once with it in the contract, or the, sorry, not contract, I won't say, the ordinance. So, all we're doing is reiterating it, that's fine. At least it's clear-cut and in the open and discussed here publicly. But we just approved this unanimously with that already in this ordinance. So, what's doubling down on it is making it clear and us owning up to our position on this in the public. So, I don't withdraw my amendment. I think it actually strengthens exactly what's currently written, so.
Okay, alright.
Well, I withdraw my second.
Okay, so, we now have, still has his motion, does somebody wanna second?
I'll second it.
Alright, so it's duly motioned and seconded.
He seconded.
Oh, he seconded it.
I'm sorry, he seconded. Oh, that's right, yeah, right, so, alright. So, we still duly motioned and seconded, we will have to take a roll call vote on this. Everybody understands what we're voting on?
On the amendment.
Yes, the amendment is to have the specificity that he stated. Do you want him to state it again?
No.
Okay, everybody understands that? Okay, it's yes, you want that language in there? No, you believe the language is already in there.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Tabernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
No.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
I'm gonna say no.
The motion passes eight-three.
Eight yes, three no. Okay, so, we're back to the motion as amended now. There will be further things that we will want, okay? The next thing will be, do we want as a motion to include the citizens committee as recommended by the sales tax?
I'd like to make that motion.
And that was Ms. Howard's.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, it's also gonna include the two things that we talked about in the committee, too. We're gonna have a... We're going to have a dollar amount and we're going to take out the word reinvention.
Oh, yes, absolutely, that was already.
Right, it already covered. Okay, I'll make that motion.
Already seconded.
Uh, she made the motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
Mr. Bartholomew made the second, okay? We already discussed the changes, the dollar amount and the other one, but now we're going to add the citizens committee, okay? Everybody clear on what we're going to do?
It is a citizens committee.
Yes, it is a citizens committee.
You don't make recommendations.
I agree, yeah, the last one worked well.
And can we ask that when they change it, it's redlined, so we don't, we look at where they made the changes, it's a little easier.
Fantastic.
Highlighted, redlined, do whatever you want.
Yes ma'am, well definitely, so there'll be four amendments, the two that were talked to committee and the two that were talked about tonight, all of which will be redlined.
Thank you very much.
So y'all can see them at second reading.
Okay. Duly motioned and seconded, any other discussion?
I just want to say one thing. I voted no for this in the committee, but I'm going to vote yes for this after Mr. Cunningham saying that we won't be taxed until May of 2025.
Right.
And the green space tax is going to go away.
Yes, yeah, and you actually did vote yes after you heard that.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Okay. All right. Duly motioned and seconded, this will be approved without objection, are there any? Yes, sir?
In your backup materials, 257, is this implementation of this citizens oversight committee, section A, or other sections, D, C, and D, are you just referring to section A?
I think so.
Just wanted to be sure.
Right, and if it's incorrect, will, we have another bite at the apple, okay? So this will be approved without objection and there are no objections. Okay, so now we're back to the original with the amendments. May I have a motion for item 12? Oh, no, it was motioned, I'm sorry, Mr. Cunningham made the motion, Ms. Tavernick made the second, now with those adopted, uh, changes. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item 12 will be adopted as first reading with the additional changes that were made.
Mr. Chairman?
Recommend a roll call.
Are we going to do a roll call?
Yeah, we can do that. All right, do a roll call.
And this is, I just wanted, this is for the amendment for the citizens oversight.
This is, no, 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 this is for the entire thing.
With the four amendments.
With the four amendments.
Two from earlier, two from this one.
Yep. Yep.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair McEllen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes 10-1.
Mr. Chairman, I have 30 seconds.
Sure.
Um, I know it sounds like we made a lot of amendments between the last one and this one, but this is exactly what the public should want. This is healthy, this is open dialogue in front of everyone and us talking about it right here. There, there might be disagreements, but this, this is what working government should look like. So when, when we, we talk about, sometimes we get confused about amendments or where we're at, that can happen, but at, at least it's being discussed and the ideas are putting out there instead of us just being a yes person and moving on and going out about our day. So I just want to thank the members chairman for taking the time.
We're voting on this for a referendum to go on the ballot in November.
Correct.
So it's going to be up to the taxpayer and the voter whether it passes or not, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, so I just make that.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing, I understand from conversation with the clerk's office that second reading will be the public hearing, so that will be February, I think, 12, just so everybody knows.
Okay, yep. Okay, item 13, ask for a motion to recommend approval of the Hawkers and Pedlers license fees. Somebody wants to hawk and peddle it? Mr. Glover?
I'll second it.
Ms. Howard, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Why, why do we even have this?
Uh, because we're required by law to do this.
Eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yes, sir, yes. Government at work. Okay, duly motioned and seconded, any other discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and there are no objections. Item number 14 is a public hearing and second reading of an ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents and to provide funding for the purchase of a piece of property known as 76 May River Road. Motion.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tavernick?
I'll make the second.
Ms. Howard, duly motioned and seconded, we will go to the audience. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to make a public comment about this purchase? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Is there any member of council who wishes to make a statement?
Long overdue, thank you for the information, tab.
Seeing none, this will be approved without objection and I see no objections. Item number 15, uh, with item number 15, uh, we need to have a member of council move to amend the agenda item number 15 to item 15A.
I did that in the beginning.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right. So we're going to be talking about 15A, okay? All right, so I need a motion and.
No, we're talking about 15 first.
I think the idea is.
15 has to be removed.
No, 15, no, you need to ask for a motion to rescind council's action.
Correct.
And, and to bring forward the committee's recommendations, um, a two-part motion. And once that's passed, then you go ahead and give first reading to the ordinance, uh, committee's recommendations, then you go to 15A.
Okay, what he said.
So let me try to.
Everybody understand what he said?
Let me try to make the motion.
Yes.
So it's a two-part motion. First, I move that we rescind the vote that council took on December 11th, 2023, in which we awarded 150,000 to workforce housing from the state A-Tax Committee recommendation. So my motion is to rescind that.
Right.
And two?
And two, the motion will be to approve first reading of an ordinance appropriating funds from state A-Tax Fund as recommended by the state A-Tax Committee in compliance with the requirements of South Carolina Code of Laws.
Okay, Ms. Tavernick makes that motion. I have a second.
I'll make a second.
Mr. Bartholomew makes the second, it was duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I think we owe an explanation of why, I can give it, or Mr. Kevin?
Well, um, it's, uh, so what we're doing is, um, council is, um, looking back or it's rescinding the action it took on December 11th, so it can then adopt the recommendation of the state A-Tax Committee.
Right.
As a separate item, item 15A, um, council can decide to appropriate 10% of the state A-Tax funds for workforce housing. So they're two separate items.
Right, okay.
So on the first one, um, I put on there that we will, you know, it's a first reading of the ordinance appropriating funds from the committee recommendation. I am not in favor of that, I know it sounds weird because I made the motion, but we've already discussed this in the finance committee meeting, and I'm sure other council members would like to weigh in, so it is on the agenda for the motion.
Okay, so it's duly motioned and seconded, you made your statement first. Mr. Bartholomew, you made the second, any comments?
No, it's just my understanding of it, we just got to do it properly by state law and there's a sufficient holdback account, um, in order to allocate the 150,000 while leaving the recommendations alone.
Right, okay. So first, we're talking about the state A-Tax as it exists and was recommended by the state A-Tax Committee.
You're trying to get that on the floor of council so that somebody can then make a motion to approve.
Right, right, okay? So that's approval of the first reading of the ordinance.
It's getting the, it's getting, it's reversing the decision of December, and it's putting on the table, um, the recommendations of the committee, and if council votes to do that, then you get a motion to approve the recommendations of the committee.
Correct, okay, so we, it's duly motioned and seconded, is there any other discussion before we vote? Seeing none, will, you're going to vote no?
No, I'm going to vote yes on this motion, but then you're going to say, there's going to be a motion, do we approve the committee's recommendations?
Yes.
And there's my no.
Okay, so, anyone else want to, Reitz, make this a no, so this will be unanimous, okay? So duly motioned, seconded, discussion is ended, and this will be approved without recommendation, without objection. Now, Ms. Tavernick?
Motion to approve the first reading of an ordinance appropriating funds from the state A-Tax Fund as recommended by the state A-Tax Committee and in compliance with the re, uh, the requirements of South Carolina Code of Laws. So that's that big sheet we all got, okay.
Okay, motioned?
I second that motion.
Mr. Glover, second. Okay. Uh, Tab, you made the motion, so you get to say anything you want first.
Because it's already 6:42, anybody in the audience, if you go back and listen to the finance special meeting, you'll hear my opinions on state A-Tax funds, and I put it on here so everyone could weigh in, but my, I will vote against this motion.
Okay.
I have a question.
Mr. McEllen?
Um, does this, um, cancel the obligation we made to provide $150,000 for workforce housing?
No, that's a separate motion.
That's coming as 15A.
Yeah, that's coming as 15A.
Okay, so we're fully funding the recommendation.
Will be done.
We're fully, we're fully funding the recommendations of the committee.
Correct.
But we also are making a motion thereafter to fund the workforce housing at that amount that we requested on December 11th.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, any other? Yes.
When the committee made these recommendations, were they fully, were there only three members of it at the time when they made the recommendation?
There were, there's five members on the committee in December, we just approved new, but only four were there to interview the applicants and review it, and six of the grants, only three people voted. So that's where it's standing, it's all in the backup documents, they did the little write-ups.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking for the public.
Yeah.
My other question is, if we vote no, then it, what's the, what's the next step? If we vote not to approve any of this?
Like anything else, it would have to go back to the committee to start all over.
Okay.
And make new recommendations.
Make new recommendations.
Right.
It's kind of one of those questions I knew to answer, too, but I wanted it right here.
No, no, that's, that's fine, okay. Would you call the, is there any other comments? Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tavernick?
Uh, yes. Oh, no, this is a no, sorry. I was distracted by Mr. Logan. I vote no, sorry.
Don't put your confusion on me.
Mr. Glover?
It's a no.
Okay, the rest of the individuals?
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Vice Chair McEllen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes. Motion is approved, six yes, five no. Now 15A.
15A, I'd like to move that we approve by title only a first reading of an ordinance appropriating 15% of state A-Tax funds for workforce housing, subject to review by the state A-Tax Committee and in compliance with the requirements of South Carolina Code of Laws.
I'll second that.
Duly motioned and seconded, now we can have discussion, hold on, you were first.
So I, I changed it from the 150,000 to 15% because Christine Weber, who is here, we may end up with 1.5 million in state A-Tax funds, and by law, we're allowed to set aside 15%. So it will be more than 150,000 dollars. But the accounting division suggestion is, we wait to make that allocation until all our state A-Tax funds are received.
Okay, Mr. Cunningham, you were second.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman, I think I've set enough today.
Ms. Howard?
Clarification, is state law, does it say affordable or workforce?
So there are two different things. This is workforce, all right, number one, and, and number two, we're not, we're not expending any of it until everything has been done in accordance with state law, you got to do your impact study, et cetera.
Okay, any other questions?
Other question?
Mr. McEllen?
If this 15% is approved, will that reduce the amounts that were granted by the committee in the previous, um, motion?
No, this is separate and apart. That has already been approved at the million dollars. This is separate from that. This is an additional 15%.
So the committee's recommendations would be fully funded and we will get 15% of what amount?
Whatever is left.
Well.
And it could be a million and a half.
Whatever is left.
Well, the committee had a million dollars to work with.
What?
Yeah, the million dollars has already been allocated, there is still money left. We don't know the exact amount because we don't know how much was collected.
Yes.
Once we know how much was collected, we will be able to allocate 15% of that amount, which could be more than 150,000 dollars. Is that a fair summarization?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, would you call the roll?
Chairman, before you call the roll, uh, I want to make sure, um, the committee, the A-Tax Committee brought before us a proposal that allocated about a million, no, not about a million dollars.
Right.
That's going to move forward.
Yes, that's already done, we approve that.
No, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely. This is something entirely separate.
Got that, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But I want to support Mrs. Tavernick's motion.
Okay.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair McEllen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion passes 10-1.
Okay, item number 16, I would ask a member for the approval of a resolution to adopt the passive parks department business use policy application and fee schedule.
I'd like to make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion, Mr. Cunningham makes the se, second, duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion?
Just that they did a great job bringing this back quickly, um, the recommendations that they brought forward went through committee easily, and it sounds like the public is happy with it, too. So thank you guys for, uh, taking care of that for us, you guys did a good job.
Yep. Okay, duly motioned and seconded, no further discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number 17, will I ask for a motion for the approval of a resolution authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents and to provide funding for the purchase of taps, tax, of a piece of property, because I don't want to read the TMS number, known as Barrel Landing Oar. Mr. Glover made the motion. Second.
I'll second.
Ms. Howard made the second. Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Okay, we're at our second citizens' committee. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Please come forward, you have three minutes. Please introduce yourself.
My name is William Smith. I'm coming forward tonight, because over the break, over the last month or so, I've been to several fenores in this community. Young babies, teenagers, I mean, we're not teenagers, young kids, maybe somebody, maybe even in their, maybe early 19, teens and 20s or whatever. But the point is this, I've sat here within the last couple of, every bit of 30 minutes to 15, 20 minutes, and I've listened to the amount of money that you've been spending and putting in to help different people. I'm looking forward to this council to support the younger generation, because they're looking for outlets to be able to be in safe. We have no movie theater on the side of the broad, no skating rink. I mean, yeah, you're bringing places for the, to eat, but where will these kids be able to go in this community, or younger, or younger generation, and be able to be, feel safe? And when will the council start focusing on that? Because I don't feel that we're focusing on it, and I've had several people that have asked me that. And for those of you who know me, though, that's something that I focus on, I believe in the young community here. Yeah, we're good, we're good for the retirement money, we're good for certain areas, for the planes that come and make all that noise. Yeah, we're good for that kind of stuff. We appreciate them. Freedom of mate is so free sometimes. But I'd be dangling, if we can sit here and keep forgetting about the young community who live here, because one day or another, it's one day soon, and very soon, those young people should be replacing your seats. So we need to make sure that we're providing those places.